This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killingly Town Council, and we are calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, April 15th. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, and Mr. Gambatista is joining us remotely. At this time, we will open up for public comment. Ms. Gloria, did we have anything submitted?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to speak to the items on this agenda, which are budget deliberations, now is your time to come up to the podium. Just state your name and address. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is budget review.
Will you ask for public comment? I see nobody coming up to the podium. Oh, okay. And what are we supposed to do? I mean, or if someone does approach me, they don't want to be identified. You know, there's a point we do, we were elected, but then again, we're sort of on our own. And, you know, we had people coming up, supporting us, and then...
We did have a lot of comments, there was coffee at the council about trying to keep the mill rate flat because of being able to stay in their homes. There was a lot of comments about that.
Well, that's a good thing. That's, it's working then if we're...
Yeah, we actually talked for more than, over an hour. We had quite, quite, quite a few people that came.
But I see, they don't like to come here in this building. This building is, you know...
Well, they felt comfortable being at Chubby Dog and...
Yeah, no, that's...
We basically had one-on-one conversations with...
Yeah, no, so that, that'll help.
There was probably a total of six altogether this time, which is the most that we've had. I think the last, the last few times?
We had, yeah, we had...
Eight, some of them left.
Yeah.
But yeah, the one-on-ones went on with, for quite a while.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, the last time, I think there was like four, three or four, and then two the time before that. So it's, it's catching on.
Yeah.
Well, that would be nice if something, maybe on a continual day.
Well, we, we...
Somehow, we gotta get them out.
The May, the May the 10th one.
The 10th, seriously.
Yep, the 10th, we're having another one.
That's, that's a great time to really encourage people to come out and make sure they get out and vote on that Tuesday.
So, I think it's a great thing, but I'm with you. This place should be packed.
Yeah, this is a lot of money.
Given, exactly, with the numbers that are in here, yes.
Act.
Yes.
We'll hear about it after.
Yeah, and Facebook.
We're about it here.
See, Ed, I feel...
I'd like to stay off of social media this budget season.
I feel a little different, Ed, like, and I think for the vote, you know, you have to have them, you have to have that whatever from the floor. But if I go to a door and I knock and somebody says this is how I feel, I think it's okay to say, hey, I got two complaints, I got three complaints, I got, this is what was said, and people either trust you or they don't, that you're related with the real...
Oh, no, no, I mean, but, again, like, for going through all of this, you know, it'd be nice to have some help, you know. We're, we don't know everything that's going on. If there's something that affects them, we're trying to get to a certain point, and we're pretty much on our own. All, all I hear is you, kind of, no increases, but they won't, they won't get engaged any more than that, and that, that's what I'm...
I think, I think, I mean, when you, you saw that on the earlier meetings, when people were getting up and talking about the library services and, and the rec department. I mean, if something's really, really important for them...
Right.
They'll, they'll come out.
So...
If it's there, if it's in their agenda, if it fits their agenda, they come out.
But I'd like them to come down just to express, even if I may disagree with them, I don't, I need...
Yeah, we need the...
I need that opinion, we need that. So then, I can have, maybe, we can have a little discussion as to where, what's going on, tweak, they can tweak me, I will tweak them, you know. That's, you know...
Hundred percent.
Whatever, I figured I better throw that out just to try to fire somebody up, but... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandowski. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to... To change the... Which line would it be? Ms. Gloria, if we're changing the, any cuts on the Board of Education side, should we reflect them in the net education budget? Or educational appropriations?
It's in the educational appropriations line, not the net. So it would be the total Board of Education expenditure line.
I will entertain a motion to change the education appropriations line to $47,938,817.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion?
Uh, can you, Jason, just one more time. I'm assuming that that reflected...
That reflects a reduction...
One, 1.6 million dollar decrease, correct, is what you're reflecting, sir?
Uh, that would be a 1.8.
A 1.8, so can you say that number again? I did a 1.6, you came up with 48,138,817?
Uh, I...
What was the number?
The number was $47,938,817.
Forty, okay, 47,000,138,817?
938,817.
938, got it, got it. All right, so you went to 1.8, okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, so you're, so we're looking at giving them approximately 554,000?
Nope, 905,391, dot, or...
No.
No, I don't think so.
$554,000 is what their increase would be. That is correct.
So my, I mean, I know these are never going to be popular. I took the 4.97%, which, this may not be the, the most popular stance. And I, I do think that that's a very high ask. I, in the climate we're in, I, you know, we have to think about everybody. The number that I looked at, that I thought was a little more common sense to me was just their salary increase, which is done contractually at 1,049,000. So you're, in essence, only giving them half of that. And that, that was the number that I looked at. I broke the, what they're asking for, the 2,354,978. Basically divided it by five, which around 471,000 is about 20%. And I like the number at like 950, because that was around 2%, which didn't cover all the salary. But that was a number, just making it public, that that's a number I'm in favor of. Um, and, just an opinion.
What is the contractual obligation? Where am I missing that?
The salary line within the Board of Education budget...
It's not in our budget, it's in...
The Board of Education budget reflects an, reflects the increase that Tony is speaking of. It's the total increase in salaries.
Oh, I see.
It is, Patty, it's 1,049,198,18.
Okay, that's on this week, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we have a lot of top-heavy salaries in the Board of Education. The athletic director, 130,000. I don't know why we have two assistant principals at the intermediate school. There was one assistant principal that was covering KCS and KMS, and then they, a couple of years ago, they added another assistant principal position. Somebody said they needed these assistant principals to be disciplinarians. Well, that's a pretty high salary to be a disciplinarian. We just can't expect the town to be, to pay for the school to be an employment agency. We have, there's too many positions.
I have to agree with you, because I believe it was last year that we, the, the ask for the Board of Education was 990,000, and DEI hires that were supposed to be mandated by the state. They weren't actually mandated by the state at that time, but they were anticipating the mandate for that. So that's, that's a million dollars right there.
I feel very sympathetic to the school board. I just want to keep people in their homes. For me, that's going to be a priority. It's a really tough year. It's nothing like when you knock on that door and there's that elderly person, and they say, one more tax cut and I have to move. And so that's always been, when I weigh my different factors, that's always weighed very heavily at me, makes it hard to sleep at night. I do feel sympathy, but that's, that's where I stand.
Well, you've got to look at the young families, too. Like, in their starter home, like the Ray's Ranch. That, that's what got hit the hardest this year, you know. And so, so it's across the board. I, I think it's a terrible budget year. I do understand what Mr. Gambatista's saying about the contractual agreements, but, I mean, they did lose that, they are dealing with that 58% cap, just like the rest of us are dealing with this car tax debacle that hopefully will get changed in a couple of years, when they see how bad it is. But I, I think when you look at the overall numbers, maybe, maybe the 1.6 makes more sense than 1.8. Maybe that's too steep, because they are, what is the amount they're losing with the 58% cap?
400, 400,000 in revenue. And so that ends up, between that and the motor vehicle...
Yeah.
The amount of decrease, or the impact to the mill rate between those two is about .35 mills. So, I mean, it's, you know, a good third of a mill for just unfunded state mandates in the current year. It's impactful.
Yeah, it's a significant amount that, of no, no fault of anyone's. It's, you know, the state of Connecticut strikes again.
It's the fault of the state. They can find the grants, our tax money, to give 5 million to access, but they can't give enough money to the towns and for the schools. It's their priorities of where they want to send our tax dollars. And most of those tax dollars do not come to the northeast corner of the state.
Well, yeah, we know that, too.
But even that being said, though, it's, everybody knows it's a tough time. It's a tough time, cuts are going to be made.
It is.
We have to survive, the people, our constituents have to survive. You know, if they have to cut a few things out to make their budget work, that's the way it is.
So I, I, I can definitely, honest with you, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Gambatista. I'm always in favor of maintaining people. I think there's plenty of room in, in the school board budget. A couple of years ago, we, I actually had a copy of their line-by-line for their entire district, for every single school. And there's so much that they could cut. But, you know, there's something to be said about people. You can't, you know, a computer can be cut, but the teacher and an interaction that a student, that relationship they develop with that teacher, that counselor, is something that can impact them for the rest of their lives. I can honestly tell you, my relationship with Mrs. Ritchie throughout, when she was my sixth grade teacher, followed me the rest of my life, and she really inspired me to do things, to do some of the things that I have done. So I think, you know, anytime that a child can develop a relationship with a mentor or something like that, you know, and sometimes it's, you have, you have memories, and I know, Patty, you probably have memories of teachers that...
I do. But my classroom size was almost 20 to 22 kids, too.
Yes, I know.
It wasn't 12 to 14. So we have to be realistic on the numbers.
But I think, I think even if we just help them make, if, even if we help them just cover their contractual, I think there's, they might just, they might have to cut some stuff. Maybe have to cut some positions, but...
But, so, so I know, nobody wants to talk about the elephant in the room, and I, and like, class load size is one thing that, to me, is very significant.
Yeah, I, I agree, 12 to 1 is ridiculous, yes.
Ridiculous. And when we look at the, the contracts, I went back to 2009, and I, I tried to be fair. But in the past decade, our, our teacher, at the high end, but teacher salaries, and it's all public record, have gone up almost $19 million. That's a significant increase. And I understand, we were on the lower end, but we're at the medium right now. So if we have low-class, you know, teacher, teacher to student, I mean, I think 12 is significantly, the, the national average is 20. So that's something that could be addressed. That's something that could definitely be looked at. And the fact that we're, we're still in Alliance District after all these years. So the, the salaries have, and I know I'm going to get beat up for this, but we have to deal in facts. Over the past 10 years, the salaries have jumped exponentially, but the academics have not improved, and we can't keep blaming COVID. We also knew the S R funds were not forever. They were not forever. And we took, and we didn't do it this year, but we took staff that was supposed to be for the learning curve and get the kids back on, and we made, put them in the operating budget. Other departments, like the health department, when those grants ran out, those people were gone. And I understand you want to save some, but we can't keep taking this burden on year after year. And I think 2.3 million was a lot to even ask. And I understand contractual, but we have to be fair to our taxpayers, too.
I, I mean, I, I will, I can agree...
I'm at 1.6.
I'll, I'll agree, I'll agree with you on that.
I'll go left a little, but I'm at 1.6.
I, I will agree with you on that, because the school district should not be the second-largest employer in the town of Killingly.
No, it shouldn't.
That's not their job. Their job is to educate, not to be spending taxpayers' dollars to keep everybody employed. So, I, I, I'm kind of torn, so somewheres, but we definitely need to make a, some sizable, significant cut. I mean, even, even if Mr. Gambatista wants 1.6, 1.8, why not 1.7? I don't know. I mean, that would take, shave off...
Go maybe at a 1.7 cut.
I thi, I think even at, even at 1.8, I think you need to, I'm, I'm with you 100%. If the, if the bang for the buck was there, if we were placing above 40% percentile in the state, because, I don't know, the, every year that I was here, only been here a few years, every single time when the Board of Education budget came up, it's money for the kids.
But they definitely go with the kids.
The kids have not, have not scored any better than previous years. Maybe a percentile or two, but that is it. So something is not working there. You're throwing people, you're throwing money at it, and at some point, you have to stop. You have to stop the bleeding. Because there's plenty of people in town that can't afford to be here, that are going to be gone. I was up for a two, I was up for a two, a 2 million cut, but I would settle for 1.8. I think, I think it's ridiculous. I think people have to need to take their budget, and they have to go back and make things work. They're paid to make things work, not to just throw money at, at, at people. I think the, you could, you could have five people in the classroom. If we're at 12 in the classroom, and it's, it's not affecting, it's not affecting our students, then something's wrong.
Something, right.
Do something about it.
Right. And I'm not saying, and that's not sign, and this is the thing, it's not unique to Killingly. Across the board, we have an academic problem. Like, a learning problem in this state. Like, the, it's ridiculous...
There's a learning problem in public schools.
...how education has gone down. But the salaries keep going up. Where did we fix it?
St. James.
If you look at our surrounding towns, you look at Woodstock, you look at all the, the northerly towns, they are doing so much better with a less, less money in their budget per, per child.
St. James makes hard, they don't make nearly what public school teachers make, and they, and it's an excellent school.
That's what I'm saying. So if you, you could take, you could take a junk car and you could throw millions of dollars at that junk car, it's still going to be a junk car at the end of the day. You have to, you have to fix the problem.
Yep. And like, and across the board, Killingly has excellent programs. To me, the agricultural commission, the, the ag department is phenomenal. And that's what the state decides to go after. You know, and our, and our athletics and the robotics, like, world renowned. It, but when you get to the core, general academics, we're not flourishing.
It needs to filter down to the kids.
Yeah, not 75% teachers.
The kids have always been the same for years and years and years. It's the, it's the teaching that needs to be, needs to be worked on.
Agreed.
And throwing money is not going to work.
The education has always been in Killingly. It's been up to the students to, to apply. Stop and think about, you know, our class sizes, and we still had students that excelled. Even in that, even my kids, when they were graduating, I mean, they had kids that went on to do great things and become doctors and lawyers and, and be really super successful. The education's always been there, but some of that is, is the individual students. But yeah, I mean, throwing money at, at a problem isn't going to fix it. I, I will agree with you there.
Again, this is a very tough year. So we have to apply this across the board.
So I've heard 1.8, I've heard 1.6. At 1.7, what would the number be?
Go ahead. It is 48,038,817.
48,038...
817.
And what, what's that a difference of? I'm sorry.
There would be 1.7.
1.7 million, that's a reduction of 1.7 million.
Dollar amount.
Oh.
That's a $100,000 difference from, yeah, from that, so... It was a long night last night.
Yeah, I have, I have to work tonight, too.
I, I would like to say that I personally have, you know, I've gone to those meetings, and I have seen improvements. There's been improvements in math, there's been improvements in reading, there's been improvements in attendance. Obviously, like Patty says, there's still a state problem, you know, and there's still difficulties, but I would like to appreciate the work they have done. I still believe in a 1.8 cut because of the reasons I mentioned before, that it's such a tough year, so...
But how do we incentivize the kids, the parents, the teachers, our legislators, that maybe there's got to be some, some sort of change? There's got to be a change in attitude.
We're all old-school, Ed, you know, spankings, spankings, homework. It's like, it's just different.
Yeah, well...
That is what I believe, and that's okay, we're different.
The culture in the United States is about supporting sports, and it's not about supporting academics. How many people get huge academic scholarships? How many people get sports scholarships? Academics is not valued in this country. That's the problem.
I think, I think the bigger problem is everybody expects a participation prize.
Yeah.
I, I, I showed up, so I should get rewarded. And, you know, that's not, if you want to get ahead, the only way you get ahead is to put the work in.
And it, and it may be tough. There are times when you want to just...
Yeah, there's times I want to sit on the couch and not get busy.
And then other times, you just got to get in there, and it's 2:00 in the morning, you haven't got it, and then maybe, maybe you collaborate with some of your friends to say, how could, if you help me, sometimes little groups can help. And I think that sort of worked in, in my case a little bit. There was a few little group things, but, and you, you got to know each other better, but... I also saw it that, when I was a senior, and some people, other parents, can you, relatives or friends of the family, can you help them a little bit? I learned more by trying to help them to, again, you're looking at what the teacher is trying to do. I got a concept. It's not quite the same. How do you make it work? It was a challenge, but that's a tough goat, because how much time do you have to spend to do that? And then the other individuals have to want to be part of it. If they want to jump out of the chair and go somewhere else, well, so I...
I think we need to look at the European models, Finland, where they have successful, um, school programs. I had an exchange student, she was here from Estonia. She missed speaking the language. And my kids were doing homework during the summer for honors classes, and she looked at me like, they're doing homework? Like, we don't get homework. Estonia has, I believe, a 99% literacy, literacy rate.
Yeah, I think point, point of order, Chairman, like, this is definitely, we, we could have more committees or whatever to help and joint committee, but it's about the money.
Yep, thank you. So we had a, we had a motion and a second.
A 1.8.
Had that brought it to, yeah. So we had, we had a motion in the second already.
Like to move the vote?
On the 1.8.
The original motion.
So the, the original motion was...
Is 1.8.
Yep. Which would have been, so...
Is the 47,938.
Yeah, the 47,938,87 would be a 1.8 cut. So that's a motion on the floor. Is there a motion to, I know there's been discussion. Is there a motion to amend that to 1.7?
Andy made the motion to move the, move the question.
Andy motioned to move the question. So he needs, he said he needs a second to move the question.
Yep. Okay, so we got a motion and a second to move the question. We'll take a vote on moving the question.
Now, question two.
To move, to move to a vote and a discussion.
Move the vote on the 1.8.
Okay. On the 1.8.
Is, because we could go on and on and on and on. So do we...
So we discussed the motion to move, right?
The motion, there's no discussion on...
I hate this thing.
There's no discussion on a motion to move a question.
You just got to vote.
Yep.
You just vote on, if you want to, if you're moving the question.
So you want a voice vote, or do you want...
Well, we'll try voice first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No.
So we need to, to move a vote, the, all right, so we're going to have to do a roll call, because I believe it's two-thirds.
Now, this is only to move it. This isn't on the amount.
This isn't on the amount, this is just to move...
This is only to move to vote on the amount. That's all this is.
Yep, yep.
This is on moving.
Stop discussion now and vote. That's what this is about.
So that's Michelle's point of order, got it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
No, Michelle's point of order was.
Well, she called a point of order and Andy called.
Yes.
Andy, okay. Got it.
Okay. Would you mind doing roll call? Thank you.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. George?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
No.
Mr. Jim Batista?
No.
Mr. Grandowski?
No.
Mr. Cartula?
Yes.
Ms. Barclay? That was a yes?
Yes.
Ms. Wakefield?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. That's six-three, that's two thirds, so we.
That moved the motion.
That moves the motion. So, at this point, we are gonna vote, and that was on.
1.8. Forty-seven million nine thirty-eight eight seventeen.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
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 Abstained? Six, six-three? So, motion carries.
So, it's one.
So, that number is forty-seven million nine hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars.
That's the number we can actually fill in on the, on the.
On the.
You can put that on the line. Write it in. Tony and Patty.
So.
Oh, shoot, I put in the wrong line.
Don't worry, as long as it's right in this one, that's.
Yeah.
Alright, so now, um.
Where does, where does the town budget sit right now? With the cuts that we?
So, the town budget sits based on what we had previously, what you had done yesterday, had a total cut of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand five hundred and twenty-three. It, we were reflecting three-hundred thousand dollars additional use of fund balance for operating, which brought that up to eight-hundred thousand in use for operating, and the additional use of seven-hundred thousand dollars for capital, which alleviated all mill rate utilization for capital. And that. Hang on a second.
That alleviated all the mill rate used for capital?
Yes. Yep. That was a hundred percent alleviation of the use of capital. Which, if you want, I can, I can reshare this A page, which shows that. That we had discussed, that I had mentioned yesterday. So, let me, this is the.
I will say, first page of this is the cuts that I had made previously, so it's open up to the.
Town council chairman.
So, ignore the 1.6 from the Board of Ed, so that he's made a decision on that. But the A page behind it reflects the capital and also the town operations as amended based on, yet last night.
So, if that were adopted as, uh, as done, the, um, hang on a second, the town's operating budget.
I can take something out if you want me to.
Nope. Would be twenty-four, twenty-six, seven fifty-nine, plus three, four, nine, four, one, two, one. Would be three, twenty-three million nine hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And that has no impact for mill rate for any capital, and that includes the pavement management plan.
What was that number again? Twenty-three million?
Twenty-three million nine hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And that moved?
Jen's verifying me.
That moved how much of the road renewal into?
So, all of the road renewal is in capital. We activated the use of seven-hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to eliminate the utilization of mill rate for capital. So, you reduced your capital investment at a fund balance down to just using seven-hundred thousand. The remaining portion of it was, of road renewal was in the activation of unallocated lake regenerating funding. So, if you look at, hang on a second, if you look at.
Yeah, could you explain, yeah, the lake road, that's where, yeah. That's where I'm getting, a lot of people looking at lake road.
So, I had passed these out yesterday. I don't know if you still have them. So, there were two scenarios for the lake road capital allocation. I gave these both of, both to you yesterday. And by moving the one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of road renewal paving into this, into the, out of the lake regenerating, it leaves you still with an unallocated capital of two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars at the end of the FY twenty-six. You would still have room if you have another capital project that arises during the year that potentially you wanna, you know, you need to seek funding for, you have some flexibility on that. So, as you're going along with regards to the cameras, if you decide that you wanna do activate a cameras project, you would look, you could potentially activate some additional funds here. You're not utilizing up all of that, but so that's what we, that's what we had discussed, was pushing all of that into the capital, activating for what was remaining in the operating budget, activating the use of fund balance, which is still substantially less than what you've used for capital investment for fund balance utilization from the previous year, activating seven-hundred thousand. That wipes out the entire impact to mill rate. There's no impact for any capital whatsoever. And so then, on the town side, your impact is largely your debt service. Those impacting state mandates that are hitting us, as well as just the general town operations, which is, so that's, that's kinda where you, where you landed.
So, by moving the road renewal into capital, the impact on D seventeen road renewal line five zero five zero one?
It remains at the two-point-five million. It's just funded differently.
Okay.
Instead of being funded through mill rate, it's funded through fund balance and through lake regenerating funding. So, it's all outside of mill rate.
Okay. So, the line on the bu, on D seventeen, the budget page, the five zero five zero one, the one-two-five zero, that number is.
Will be modified. Yep.
So, that's gonna come down to zero?
Correct.
Okay. So, in a sense, we'll be funding the roads as we did last year?
Correct. Exactly as we did last year.
I think, and I think that's, I think that's gonna get us to a point that I think we can, like Matt was saying yesterday, where we can step back. And then we'll have some fairly happy residents, 'cause most of the roads will be where they need to be.
The, okay, thank you. The next thing, I will entertain a motion on page E two. The road renewal line that is currently at two million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to reduce that to two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then at that point, that number and the road renewal line above it would be a total of two-point-five million dollars, which is what the councils discussed using on roads.
I'll make that motion.
Um, I just wanna make sure I verify something. Are you removing the town aid road funding? 'Cause that's capital grant funding. So, we can't eliminate town aid road funding and use it somewhere else. That's capital money that's restricted to capital paving. So, the, the two. So, I wanna make sure I understand what we're doing here.
The two-point-seven million dollars that's on road renewal. That's all town aid road money?
No, not all. That's the combination of everything.
Yes.
Alright.
So, we're not reducing the town aid road portion of that.
Okay.
We are reducing the portion that comes from general fund contribution.
So, I thought I had heard that you are also incorporating the top line of the fifty thousand dollars. No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure I clarified.
The top line stays? I'm just indicating that by reducing that to two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that, that two-hundred million, two million four hundred and fifty thousand, in addition to the fifty thousand that's on the line above it, puts us at a total of two-point-five million we'll be expending on roads, which is what the council has, the council's plan was for this year.
So, I just wanna recognize that the fifty thousand is town aid road money that is designated to strictly unimproved roads. So, the pavement management plan of the two-point-five million is on paved roads? Not on unimproved roads. And the two-point-five million is also recognizing that you also have town aid road money that is gonna be utilized as well for the paving. So, that's the, that's the proj, that's the program and the project that you've been investing in was, and that's why each year, when he comes back to you and says, well, how much should we spend? He says, alright, well, we used the two-point-fiver in the current year, two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus the town aid road money, and leveraged whatever additional, right? That's the, that's the paving plan that has been, you know, turned your numbers here at this point in time. So, just, I'm just being clear with what that pavement management is. It's about the, that's only recognizing the improved roads.
Let me ask you now this, Mary, 'cause I get what you're saying, two separate things. Did we sign on to two-point-five million or two-point-seven, two-seven million?
Two-point-five is what is coming from either the lake road generating unallocated capital or the seven-hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. That's what's making up the two-point-five million. The remainder of that two-point-seven is town aid road money.
But point of order, shouldn't we, the motion has been made, then we, then we handle this in discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that the, that the motion that was clear as to what the number was that you could put in the motion, because I didn't understand what he read out for numbers. So, again, just trying to make sure we understood before we had a full motion on the floor, only to find out you had to go through an entire amendment cycle.
So, I just, I wanna confirm what you just said. So, the two-point-seven two-seven six-two-five includes the fifty thousand?
No. No.
The second line of road renewal, two million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five. That is the two-point-five million, plus the town aid road for improved.
So, it is plus, it includes the fifty thousand?
It includes the town aid road. Not, the fifty thousand that is above it is the.
Different fund, yeah, yeah.
Different, is a different allocation.
So, it's three, three funds there, yeah.
So, you see the two? Okay.
Yeah.
But that, that number doesn't reflect all of the improved town aid road money, because that line item is three-hundred-and-seven thousand, which three-hundred-and-seven, uh, two-point-five million would put us at two-point-eight.
So, the, the remaining portions of town aid road are allocated on other pages of storm drainage improvement, guide rails and sidewalks, which are all for improved roadways. That's the remaining portion of the town aid road grant.
So, the worst-case scenario is where we would be cutting fifty thousand?
You can't, no, you would, well, I, I'm not sure exactly, so the town aid road can't really be cut. That has to be used.
I'm not saying we're cutting town aid road. We're saying, on the road renewal, we're taking that, putting that at two-hundred and, two million four hundred and fifty thousand. So, the total would be, total would be, yeah.
Less that special fund.
Yeah. Well, it's not gonna be less, the special fund is built into that. We're just.
No, but Jason's point was we, that would give us that two-point-five, and it really wouldn't. It really wouldn't give us that two-point-five.
It would, it would just be from different funding sources.
It would be less than what you're cur, than what you.
Than our commitment, in other words, because the commitment included the other funds. That's all she's saying. The original commitment wasn't just a two-five from anywhere. It was a two-five plus these other two funds.
That was the original investment that you guys had. That was what we, that's how it's been budgeted for in previous budgets, and that's, uh, yeah, that was what was presented.
Now, do we have a motion in the second on that?
You would, uh, Andy had motioned, but there was no second, because I did, apologize, I did try and understand the numbers.
So, for clarification.
Can we restate the motion, please?
Yep. The motion was to reduce the two million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars that's in road renewal down to two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the funding, that would reduce the funding from the general fund contribution to road renewal.
I'll make that motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion?
With the other two funds, Mary, could you give us an idea where, where that would land on our two-point-five commitment?
So, um, if you're reducing, so your road renewal for paved roads would be the two-point-four million. That's what you would have in total. In previous years, you've done the two-point-five million plus the roughly two-hundred-and-thirty thousand for, um, town aid roads. So, you've roughly invested two-point-seven million in prior years. This year, you would be dropping that road renewal in totality down to the two-point-four. And I would say that if you're reducing the general fund contribution, I'm assuming that you're reducing that from the fund balance allocation of the seven-hundred thousand for capital, because otherwise, you would be investing more general fund, you wouldn't put fund balance negatively. So, you would just reduce the utilization of fund balance from the seven-hundred thousand.
Yes.
Which, again, still has a zero impact on mill rate.
But it reduces how much we're going into fund balance to cover the mill, 'cause we're using fund balance.
Correct. We don't wanna use a lot of fund balance always to cover the mill rate.
So, it reduces how much we're pulling out of fund balance to cover roads.
But we're still at over a one mil. We're still at one-point-two-seven, correct?
No.
What are we at? One-point-two-five?
No, we're lower than that.
Um, we are, so, if we were to pass as it stood, the mill rate would be twenty-one point four-six based on the cut to the Board of Education of 1.8, which is an increase of one-point-one-four mills.
Thank you.
And this, you're, you're, and that's including, counting for the, you know, the action that you take right now, because it is a wash on the operating budget. There is no mill rate impact. It's just fund balance allocation. So, there, it, that, it doesn't change that number.
What was your, what was the mill rate?
The mill rate increase ends up being an increase of one-point-one-four.
I do have one question. Fund balance, what would the balance be where we're at right now?
It would be at the nineteen percent, correct?
So, we had projected with the utilization of the fund balance at eight-hundred thousand dollars for operating and seven-hundred thousand dollars for capital, you would have a fund balance percentage of nineteen-point-three percent. So, still well adequately funded with no issues. It also shows a step down of utilizing fund balance for capital from over two million dollars down to seven-hundred thousand, which is a pretty easy conversation with your, with your, um, credit rating agency. The increase of the utilization, which is only by fifty thousand dollars of operating, is really easily discussed with credit rating agencies around the impacts with regards to motor vehicle and the not, the unfunded mandates. So, again, I don't think you're jeopardizing anything in credit rating purposes, and you haven't substantially reduced your fund balance into any critical stature. You could, you know, you still projected could utilize that fund balance in a smoothing effect over the next several years without really any derogatory impact.
And the recommended amount would be sixteen to eighteen percent is recommended for the fund balance?
Sixteen percent is our fund balance policy. So, you know, and so that nineteen-point-three is based on utilizing seven-hundred thousand for capital.
Thank you. So, we had a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
So, what do we have, do we have the final numbers?
Uh, like, give us a few minutes to make sure we got the right numbers, okay?
What was that? What was that first year number?
I don't think it's just two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, now, they reduced it. I went off by the actual motion. They reduced it off. They reduced it off two-seven-seven.
Yeah.
Six-five. That's what they actually reduced off. That's how much they reduced out. So, that's how much comes off. Yeah. Two-seven-seven. Oh, you want me to give me the, hang on a second. That's all for the... I gotta secure the town aid road, and the rest has gotta come up for that. Two-seven-seven, six-two-five. Six-two-five, yep. I gotta see it right here. Yep. Let me float through the other page, too, please. Yep. Three hands. Let me just check, do the check here, please. Yep. Go ahead. Yep, okay. One-two-two-three-seven-five. One-two-two-three-seven-five.
Okay. So, okay, so, the general fund number is twenty-three million six-four-three-two-five-five. I'll say it again. Two-three-six-four-three-two-five-five.
And that is general government, not general fund?
That's general government, right. General government appropriation.
What would the total, the combined number be?
So, the, and, and just for clarification, the Board of Ed portion of this is forty-seven million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
Right. So, your combined total is seventy-one million five-eight-two-oh-seven-two. I'll say that one more time.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-five point two-two for the approving the Town of Killenley operating budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
And they, you need the amounts read, too?
I will read that. Once I have a second, I will read it off.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Kertula, seconded by Mr. Whitehead, and I will read the resolution, Resolution approving the Town of Killenley operating budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Killenley, then in accordance with Section one thousand five of the Town Charter, the budget for the Town of Killenley, Connecticut for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, in the amount of twenty-three million six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars allocated to general government and forty-seven million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars allocated to education. For a total combined budget of seventy-one million five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-and-seventy-two dollars is approved and shall be filed with the town clerk for submission to the annual town meeting for its adoption. We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Do you have, is the mill rate?
That mill rate actually gets set later on after the budget is approved.
But, that would produce a proposed mill rate of twenty-one point four-six, which is an increase of one-point-one-four.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Mary, that was twenty-one four-six, you said?
Correct. Twenty-one four-six would be the proposed mill rate.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kertula, seconded by Ms. Barclay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Have a...
Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good rest of your vacation, Tony.